Okay, it's the special meeting of the Clayton City Council. It's four o'clock, March 22nd, 2021. We're going to call the meeting to order and we're going to do the roll call. I guess Janet's not joining us, so Raina, is that you today?
Laura, she will be acting as city clerk.
Laura's here. Oh, yes, there she is. Okay. Laura will be acting as Janet, playing the role today of Janet.
Yes, definitely. Councilmember Juan?
Here.
Councilmember Tillman?
Here.
Councilmember Diaz?
Present.
Vice Mayor Clovin?
Here.
And Mayor Wolf?
I'm here. Okay, turn that sound off. There we go. Okay. And now we have the video we're going to watch. So we'll roll that.
Hold on. Laura will bring that up.
Pardon me?
Laura will bring that up.
Okay.
And why can't I do share screen? Hold on, I did do share screen, I think. Hold on. Where's my share screen feature? It's not coming up. Okay, try this. Am I allowed to share screen, Raina?
You should be. It should be at the bottom of your screen.
Yeah. Okay, here we go. See if this works. No?
It's, there's some volume there, but it's very, very soft. At least to me.
This meeting is being webcast on the city of Clayton's website. The mayor will call upon its council, presenters, staff, and other speakers by name, and ask that they speak clearly and state their names before giving comments or remarks. Persons participating via webcast and Zoom with their cameras enabled are reminded that their activities are visible to viewers. Members of the public participating via Zoom wishing to speak should use the raise hand feature or dial star nine and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. Telephone attendees will be called upon by the last four digits of their phone number. It is requested that public speakers state their name, but providing such information is voluntary. Written public comments received by Clayton City Clerk by 5:00 p.m. today will be entered into the record, right? Will not be read out loud. If authors of a written correspondence would like to speak, they are free to do so and should raise their hand and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. A roll call vote will be taken for all action items. The chat feature is not active. In order to get the full Zoom experience, please make sure your application is updated.
That was a great silent movie. Should have had like a piano playing. So I think, I think luckily our majority of our participants, I think, are very familiar with.
Bar, if you can unshare your screen, that would be great.
Yep, I'm getting there now. Well, I can't play, undo this. There we go.
Mayor, it's back to you for the pledge. Oh. Mayor is frozen. We're just gonna have all kinds of technical challenges today. Councilmember Diaz, perhaps you would like to lead us in the pledge and hopefully the mayor will be able to come back and join us for the end of the pledge.
I'm ready anytime you are.
Let's, let's move forward. I'm sure that the mayor will be back on shortly.
You want me to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thumbs up. I got, I understand thumbs up. Okay, here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll give, am I still losing people? Am I losing people right and left here? All right, we will give the mayor, if you would, just another moment to get back on before we open it up for public comments. I'll make sure that he is here for that portion so he can hear it. Now we need the piano.
Has he sent some message or anything?
I did. His internet connection appears to have gone down. It only happens when you most need it. So he is logging back on as we speak. And I, I will, I can read the introduction for public comment, but I don't want us to take any public comment until he is on to hear it. So, "Members of the public may address the city council on items within the city council's jurisdiction which are not on the agenda at this time. To assure an orderly meeting and equal opportunity for everyone, each speaker is limited to three minutes enforced at the mayor's discretion. In accordance with state law, no action may take place on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. The council may respond to statements made or questions asked or may at its discretion request staff to report back at a future meeting concerning the matter. Public comment and input on action items will be allowed when each item is considered by the city council." Damn, I was hoping he would be back on by then. Well, I can say if there are members of the audience who want to comment on items that are not on the agenda, if you could use the raise your hand feature or star nine if you're calling in, this would just be for items not on the agenda. Otherwise, we will hear comments on items on the agenda at that appropriate time. I don't see any hands. So now we would lose public comment on items not on the agenda and move to action items, and now we really need to wait for the mayor. I've talked through all of the things I think I've got to talk through, but I do, I do wanna make sure that he can hear anything, Patrick, that you have to say in kicking off this event. So hopefully it'll only be another minute or so.
There he is.
Phew. Are you back?
There we go. Sorry about that. I was right in the middle of things and lost my internet connection. It went up and then it went down again, so I'm back. Where did we leave off? Did Jim do the pledge of allegiance already?
Jim did the pledge and I read the intro to public comment on non-agenda items. There were no hands raised, so I closed in public comment on non-agenda items. And we are on to action items and I was just about to turn it over to you if you wanna say anything to kick it off or to Patrick Ibarra, who will be here.
We are going to turn the meeting over to Patrick Ibarra from the Maharano Group. Did I say that right?
Yes, you did, Mayor. Thank you so much and thanks to everybody on council. Raina, thanks for the opportunity. Appreciate the opportunity to spend some time with you this late this afternoon into the early evening. We do have a hard stop at six o'clock, trying to help the group continually, continue on their journey and building a strong community. We're trying to capitalize on your strengths. I tend to be ever the optimist. This is a renaissance for the community of Clayton. You're always trying to pursue your potential. It can be a bit messy at times, of course, if it was easy, you would already done some of these things. So what I'm trying to focus on tonight, and I spoke to mayor and council prior to these sessions. I appreciate the time you took to share with me your input. Raina and I put an agenda together tonight. That's not about the speed of things. We're not trying to race through. And as I shared with all of you, better with two hours to spend some quality time on some of these subjects than trying to just get through a lot of subjects in a short amount of time. This may be the beginning of a series of sessions. We're just not sure. We wanted to see how this first session went. I'm sort of like your fitness trainer this afternoon, so I hope that you have your sneakers on. I'm trying to help you increase your capacity to be both responsive and proactive about change. We're gonna spend some time tonight on the people's side of your role and also spend some time on where's the community going? There's opportunities out there. There's constraints. And so we're gonna examine that. I'm gonna share my screen periodically. I would encourage you, I hope that you have the agenda handy as well as the attachments. There were several items on the attachments that we're gonna go through, just as backup material, support material. The agenda that I put together is actually on page four of the packet that Raina had prepared in consultation with city staff. And that's the agenda for tonight. By the way, Mejlando is Spanish. It means getting better all the time. And that's really what I try to do with my clients, is try to help them continually improve. Be intentional, purposeful, and deliberate. In these sessions, it's really important, I think, and very helpful for those of you on council, as well as those of that may be watching at home, to talk about in a positive way, what's the role of the city as a community builder? I tend to think as you look on page six of your packet there, where it says the benefits from good government, the role of local government is to be the protagonist, advocate for a better quality of life in so many different dimensions. And that's really scalable based on the size of city, but fundamentally, that's what you're trying to do is advance, facilitate, endorse, support, a lot of action verbs to improve the quality of life, trying to help create social good, if you will. What I'm curious to know as we start off this evening, and I'm gonna share my screen, is I would like some feedback from mayor and council about what are the benefits from good government? When you think about the opportunities you have, when you talk with your family and friends about maybe why you chose to run, what impact you wanna have on the community, I think it's really helpful in these gatherings to focus on the positive. It's easy to pick at local government, what it's not doing. I think it's important as we set the table for tonight to focus on what you are trying to accomplish. You talk to your family, your friends. What do you, you know, let's say I moved to Clayton and I said, hey, you got a city council. You're on council. What are you trying to do? There's no right answer to this. I just think it's helpful to set the table about expectations. And I'm gonna try to type, pardon any spell, typos here, but I'm trying to simulate as though we were in the same room and I'm in front of you at a flip chart pad. I would be asking you the same question. And I think it's important that you all see what your colleagues are sharing. So I just asked mayor and council to unmute yourself and, and share, and I'll try to jot down as much as I can as you say it. What are the benefits from good government? What are you trying to accomplish? What do you think?
Open communication and dialogue.
Okay. All right, thank you. What else?
I'm trying to demystify the concept of city government.
Okay. That's kinda get cloaked, doesn't it, with, with people make assumptions?
Correct.
Pardon me. What else? When you're doing what you're kind of charged with, if you will, what's the impact on the community? You're a service provider, you're a service-centric organization. You're focusing on results.
You know, if you talk about why I ran in the first place, it's because I wanted to have a voice for the voiceless and to bring Clayton forward. I think that we have, we have such a divided community that we want to somehow heal that and come to some kind of consensus that what is it that we actually need? And so that's, that's kind of why I ran in the first place.
Thanks, Mayor. Other comments? What's the, what's the benefits from good government? What's the outcome? Are you in the output business or are you in the outcome business?
A little of both, I think.
But having more outputs doesn't always translate to a better outcome, does it?
Well, that's, I think that's been proven over the last several goal-setting sessions for us.
What else? What impact do you, when you think of your legacy without seeming about all about you, but when you wanna think about your time, whenever you decide to step away, what's gonna give you a sense of satisfaction? There's a lot of that's intrinsic, right? It's kind of what you bring to it, your sense of purpose, your sense of contribution. I tend to be sort of old school, public service is a noble profession. You bring a lot to it. You wanna have some sort of impact. It's not always visible. It's not about a building. You know, there's a physical infrastructure to a community. The sidewalks and streets and streetlights and traffic signals and water, sewer. Then there's the social infrastructure of a community, how people interact, the kind of the course of conversation that you have with residents, both new and seasoned. But other thoughts you have about what are you trying to accomplish as a community builder?
I would say trust. I think that there's a lot of distrust of prior councils, whether that's founded or unfounded in people's minds. But I would like us to get to where the community realizes that we're here working for them, not against them. And I don't think any prior councils have been doing that, but people seem to think that that's the case. And I think if we can move forward as a community, knowing that you can trust the people that you've elected to be in these seats to do what's best for the entire community, then the better off we'll be.
Yeah, I would offer, thank you for sharing that, Councilmember Tillman. I would offer that, you know, leaders, traffic, and trust. And trust is the currency we have in all relationships, personal, professional. I think from local government to its residents, business owners, what have you. You're, you're trying to, as you said, Councilmember Tillman, sometimes trying to restore, renovate, reinforce, emphasize that they can trust your judgment. Doesn't always mean they agree with it.
Right.
And I think you all have that among the five of you as well. How you, you may not always agree. It's how you disagree that can be revealing, can kind of be a discovery, that, that notion of being colleagues and how you work together. Because people want to, I'm old, you know, ever the optimist. I think right now people wanna have faith in their elected officials that things are working on their behalf. And some of that's not just what you do. I would offer, it's also how you do it. You know, the interactions that you have among yourselves, the collegial, collegiality, the sense of fellowship, the debate, and how you have, I'm just offering that as a perspective, so. Other thoughts about what the benefits from good government, what you're trying to accomplish as community builders in Clayton?
Maintaining our small-town community, both in safe and secure, a safe and secure envi- environment, excuse me.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Absolutely. I mean, that, that's one of the, your charge with that. How do you create that? Not solely, but you influence that with the deployment of resources. A lot of different things. We're also seeing across the country about safety is expanding. What that term means. It's kind of always been in the sphere of public safety, police and fire, but it's also expanding and into other realms. Obviously, the pandemic is really creating some conversations in communities of all sizes that public safety is now a segment of public health, that we're looking at it just differently, at least having conversations about that. We're not sure where that's gonna land, but communities of all, all across the country, and I have clients all across the country, they're just having good discussions about what does that mean for us at the local level? What's their role?
We're talking about, I think, one of our biggest things, we're gonna probably talk about it later today, but it's maintaining local control. How do, how do we avoid becoming servant to the state? You know, just kowtowing at every, every turn. I think the citizens of Clayton deserve to have some say in what, what it is that our city is going to become.
Yeah, there's definitely a tug of war. I have clients up and down California and have for years. And we're definitely seeing a more intense push by the state to insert itself, to overrule or insert itself as a decision-making authority about certain dimensions that you historically have had within your purview. Sometimes residents don't wanna hear all that. They just know they don't like, they don't like that impact. And I know, as I talked with all of you, you're trying to, that's that tug of war. And you're not alone. A lot of cities are feeling that same pinch, and it's disruptive. So how do you reconcile that? And sometimes that is, as we all know, it's a, whether it's the state government or the county, a lot of cities with the county and public health and all of that, those issues, then the federal government. So there's no shortage of government sort of impacting local issues. And again, you all know that. It's, it's, again, it's sometimes a tug of war. Other thoughts about this? We're not trying to solve it. I just wanted to flush this out as we got started tonight. And I will capture all this and put it in my materials that I share with Raina that she can then send out to all of you, because these are your words. And I think it's good that you, you know, keep these somewhere in your leadership playbook. I think it's important in your role to have some sort of source material, a file folder or something that you draw inspiration from or some guidelines or guard posts, or guidelines that you can, can help you just be more effective as an elected official. Passages or quotes or, you know, anything that you find helpful in that realm, so. Okay. If something comes up to you a little bit later, please feel free to, to shout and, and I'll go back and add it. But we just wanted to capture it. It's both the process and the outcomes. You talk about communication, demystifying the concept of city government. Vice Mayor said that. And that's an ongoing journey. We're seeing that in jurisdictions of all sizes, where people, do people base their opinion on facts? No, they base them on perceptions. And they don't always, those perceptions are not always even rooted in facts. They're rooted in all sorts of content that people gather. A voice for the voiceless, trying to offer a perspective for people that may not always feel as though government speaks for them or, or on their behalf, to bring the community forward. And that doesn't mean at breakneck speed, but trying to stay relevant. There are some communities that have become brittle. They've matured and they've sort of aged out. So even those people in Clayton that want the community to stay the same, in some respects, you have to make different decisions because you're presented with different circumstances, which is sort of counterintuitive, I think, sometimes to people. I'm just offering again, that as a perspective. And then the rest about trust and maintaining small-town community in a safe and secure environment, that local control. Nothing brand new, but I hope it just reaffirms it here as we get started. Now, what I want to share with you, just a little bit of information that I put together based on my experience working in city management for 15 years and a consultant for the last 19 years next month, how people are viewing you. And I know sometimes, you know, as I say, after you get elected, you can no longer buy ice cream at the grocery store when you first get there because by the time you leave, it's melted. And when you tell your spouse, when you go into the store, I'll be right back, they say, no, you won't. And they just turn off the car, because people that you don't know, know you. And that's, you love that. People have conversations. I think, Mayor and council, you're community storytellers. You're the five most visible advocates in some respects for the community. So I just wanted to share, maybe a friendly reminder here about how people are observing you through different lenses. And I'll just cover these rather quickly, going from bottom to top, the results you achieve. What are you accomplishing on the behalf of residents and in the, in the community of Clayton? And how are you communicating those? To Councilmember Tillman's point earlier, that open communication, I say this with all support and of local government, I'm a big fan, I'm also a tough critic. Historically, local governments don't market their success to their own residents. So people take things for granted until they're not there. So what are those results you're impacting on their, to enhance their quality of life on their behalf? And how are you communicating that to them on a regular basis? Because sometimes communities have people telling their story. They don't even live in your jurisdiction. And that can really be frustrating. You're not alone in that sense. You know, there's a lot of gossip and graffiti online. There's also a lot of passion and purpose there, but how that gets reconciled can be a challenge. The next one is employees. How employees carry themselves in their community, from the fleet and the appearance of the fleet to the conversations employees have with residents out in the field, on the phone, or at the counter, when you can do that. Employees and how they represent themselves in some respects are part of the collective self-esteem people feel about where they live. They wanna take pride in the employees. They wanna see that taking pride taken in by the employees as well. Again, we're not trying to fix things here, just trying to let you know, people are watching things, right? Can be smothering sometimes, can be exhausting. The third dimension is financial, probably the most metric of all these. You know, what's your cash fund reserved? What's your bond rating? The financial metrics, your steward on behalf of their tax dollars. I know it's always fun to explain to residents their, what your bond rating is. Best way to describe it is the community's credit score. People can relate to that. But financial, how are you doing on their behalf? Near-term, short-term, long-term? The next one is your portfolio of services. Government does a lot of things well. One of the things it struggles with is stop doing things. When you look at your portfolio, how modern is the portfolio of services? Which services are no longer value-added? Tough, tough call sometimes to decide what you're gonna stop doing. I totally get that. But that portfolio. What's being, I would offer that money, and I understand it, money is not the city's most precious resource. Time is. On what do you want Raina and the staff to spend their time on in the delivery of services? The next one is citizens or residents. Think of the caliber of conversations you're having with residents on the phone or online. Sometimes that can be a real challenge. It can kind of drain you. You wanna make sure you're spending time around residents or filling you up. If there's anything that's happening across the country, there's a pent-up demand for people to just wanna go outside and have a celebration with their neighbors. And I think it's important for mayor and council, when they have those, for you to be around people that are gonna fill you up about how much they love what's going on, whatever that might be. I just think, you know, that you're not immune from feeling deflated, and sometimes it can be a drag. So you wanna kind of refu, I'm just sharing that with you, citizens, the caliber of conversations, the pool of volunteers. The next one is ethics. You're just supposed to be ethical. I mean, there's no prize for it. But people are watching and they'll make, they'll sort of cross-pollinate something they heard halfway across the country about some city that did this, that, or the other. And all of a sudden, how does that interfere or reinforce their point of view about you as community builders? So ethics. And then the final one is political, which is probably the most sensitive one. And I say this, and it's a delicate thing, but I, I try to help councils focus on their character, not their personality. But how you agree is not very revealing, but how you handle disagreement is very revealing about the character of a governing body. How you handle that discourse about being colleagues and that sense of fellowship, the shared commitment you have, that you all have a passion, you all have a passion for Clayton. Sometimes it's, there's a collision. You may collide with a colleague. You just don't want to tear at the fabric of a relationship you have with your colleague. Because you all know that you'll be in the spotlight for reasons that you don't like, and you'll all be in the spotlight for reasons that you like. So how you handle that? When residents talk about council, they talk about you as a body, not necessarily individuals. Why'd the council do that? Or what are they thinking? So they look at you more as an entity. I'm just sharing that with you. So that political one can be really, and right now, it can be really, I don't know, challenging. It's harder to build relationships, I think we've all found, on Zoom. We miss the social cues. We miss the interactions. You don't give a chance to have just a brief chat before you sit down at a council meeting or at break, have a grab a coffee or a soft drink and just have a, you know, shoot, shoot the breeze. There, there's, that's valuable in building relationships. If anything, I think we've all found that. So that political, it's a little harder to do it online. Everything is scheduled now, and it's a little bit, a lot of monologue, but not as much dialogue. So I just wanted to share this with you, some information that you probably have seen before. I'm sure I missed one of those lenses, but just offer this as a reminder that people are watching and they're evaluating your credibility through many different factors. Not always on the things that we think. And I use this example, you know, it's just about with kids. Can we all agree that if you have children, that our kids pick up their bad habits from our spouses? How many of you agree with that statement? I'm just kidding. But you know, when you're in public office, people cueing you. And you cast a long shadow. When you walk into city hall, when you can do that again, you're not just a resident, you're an elected official. There's a certain responsibility that go, I'm just sharing that with you. So that visibility can be, sometimes it can be exhausting. And then just another set of materials, just to share with you real quickly. I don't wanna spend too much time me talking. We wanna get to your conversation. But these are just 12 reminders that you may have come across when you went through a new elected orientation at the league or something, you've come across the NLC. I hope that you had a chance to read that article from the Institute for Local Government about exceptional councils. I borrowed from that as well as from other organizations that do research. Good stuff, nothing, no revelations, just good practices. And these are those strategies for creating a more collaborative, effective governing body. First one, and these are not in priority, think and act strategically. We're gonna try to do some of that here shortly. In order to do good strategic planning, you've gotta do good strategic thinking. So looking at things more in the macro, not just the micro. That's that. And it's not either or, but I think it's building the different muscles. The second one, respecting the shared constituency. You're not all plugged into every group in the community. You rely on the, on each other about, you know, who's got, who's plugged into the small business community? Who's built, who's plugged into that community? You know, you're all have different, the diversity of your points of view is your source of strength. The diversity of the community in many ways is the source of strength for the community. So you can't just be everywhere at once as five council members. So you rely on each other to bring forth that point of view. The third one is understand and demonstrate the elements of teams and teamwork. You are fundamentally a team. I would say that you're like a band. And when you join a band that's had its share of hits, sometimes it's hard to find the footing about where do you, where do you fit into that? So trying to find that footing. Number four is having clearly defined roles and relationships. Where does your, where does that start and stop? Especially number five, honoring that council-staff partnership. There is a chain of command. It helps in that behalf for you to be successful. For the city manager, who you hold accountable for the performance of the organization, what you vest in her as, by virtue of her position, and how you're working through that. Number six, allocating time and energy appropriately. I'm sure many of you found this is not just about attending meetings. There's phone calls, reading the staff reports. And it's also a commitment by your family. You're taking time away from them. Sometimes you like that you get out of chores, but you know, other times it's about, um, you, you're missing, you're missing, you miss things. And if you have children, aged, school aged children in school, um, or spouses who are active, they also can feel a little bit of conversations they may not normally be hearing, because they know their mom or dad or aunt or uncle or something is in, on council. So it does start, I think, trying to equip them. I'm not trying to be overly dramatic, but it does change sort of how they're viewed. Sometimes by other business owners, by whatever, they're not just, um, not just, but they're beyond just a resident of Clayton. They also have different access. And I think people see them. So, uh, number, uh, seven, having clearly rules and procedures for council meetings. You want to make good protocols aren't tripping you up. It's tough enough to, to be, to be, uh, elected official in this time that we live in. Make sure that those protocols and processes, uh, Reina included, uh, materials in your, in your handout for the packet for tonight about the governance rules and procedures. Some of those are fairly prescriptive. Might be good to, to review those when you have a moment and say, what are you doing to make sure you're living up to those expectations? Just good, healthy habits. Uh, number eight, continuous learning and development, whatever it's through the League of California Cities or National League of Cities, but staying well equipped with those. If anything, right now, it's easier to, to kind of access, yeah, I'm going to attend one hour of the session at a conference and then I'm going to read this. Just good content. Think about your diet, what you're taking in to help you sharpen your capabilities into being even a more effective elected official. And while the things that you're dealing with in Clayton are unique because they're Clayton's, in some respects, they're not unique to the state and they're not unique to the country. So listening and learning from your colleagues, and we know nothing in government is proprietary, gives you a chance to soak up about how another jurisdiction handled it. Not that you're going to cut and paste, but how they work through it. Uh, number, uh, nine, this is more, uh, than the pragmatic side when you're actually in the meetings about problem solving. Remember you're a community problem solver. And you're trying to be critical, apply critical thinking and creative problem solving in that realm. Being attentive, asking good questions, uh, letting people know you're listening. We know, uh, eye contact is the equivalent of oxygen. So how you're working through that. Uh, number 10, trying to distinguish between, with your colleagues between values, interests and positions. Some of you may take the, you know, the classic contrarian point of view to make sure that the group is processing things. You know, leadership is about plumbing and poetry, and some people want to go jump right on the poetry. Other people want to jump on the plumbing. Again, the diversity of the way you look at things is a source of strength for how you govern. It's wonderful that not everybody's the same. It'd make for a pretty boring world, it'd make for a pretty boring council. And even those councils where everything's 5-0, doesn't mean they always agree about things that matter. So yeah, there are times you're going to be 3-2. That doesn't mean it has to be contentious or controversial in that. Just mean you have a honest, uh, different point of view. How you work through that, I think is a testament to who you are as a governing body. And then number 11, just that notion of civility. People are watching. Let some other city make the news for the wrong reasons. Let them be sort of the center of that. You can be popular as a city, but it's not always for good things. About that notion of civility. And just good, you know, good choices about mutual respect and listening, not interrupting. Trying to listen to your colleagues. And number 12, which we could spend a whole session on, but just to tease out a little bit, that notion of effective public engagement. What I find sometimes in cities the size of Clayton is there's this notion that everybody knows everybody. They don't. So I think that's always a challenge. I'm just sharing that with you, um, that, that public engagement. You have, you were, you're, what cities are doing intention, more, more often, or more frequently, I can't talk, more frequently now, is they're trying to be more intentional about that. We're, we're moving past citizen participation to public engagement. And that's a different construct. It's not just what you're pushing out. It's what you're bringing in. How do you enlist residents in the future of Clayton and not just the ones that are the most vocal? It's also the residents that may, you know, they're busy doing this or they're busy doing that. And as Vice Mayor Clovan said earlier today, you know, it's to demystify. Some people don't participate because they don't understand the dynamics or they don't understand how their voice can contribute to the shaping of public policy. There's an old saying in government, public policy is made by those who show up. Say, how do you enlist other people in that public engagement and make it compelling? So those are just some, some good reminders. I'm going to stop sharing, um, so and just ask for some feedback from all of you. I hope that resonated with you, just, just sharing that with you, keeping it handy, good reminders. I'm sure I missed some information, but just trying to refresh that point of view that you're doing everything in that public sphere, which can be, again, even in the best of times, a little bit daunting, a little bit imposing. So. Thoughts or reactions to what I shared there with you? Good stuff. I hope that you found it helpful. Maybe sharpen, sharpen your polish a little bit. I'm sorry?
It seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, pretty straightforward stuff. Nothing brand new. Sometimes reminders are just helpful. So. Okay. All right. Now we're, um, we're on page nine of your, your packet, which I spent a lot of time preparing. I'm kidding. Potential goals and objectives. I would refer, uh, Raina and I talked about this and, uh, we had a really good discussion. You know, here early in her tenure, and I know she speaks with all of you often. It's really important as the city manager for her to try to get clarity among, from the five of you about what are those priorities? You know, I understand Raina's a pretty good dancer, but she can't dance five, there you go. She can't dance five different ways, five days of the week. Meaning that each of you are giving her a different direction. She'll get whiplash and what will happen is progress won't be made. It'll be the classic, the squeaky wheel. So what we want to try to do tonight is unknock some of the threads. And what I, what we worked on together is on page 30 of your packet, so the final page. Where we took a, as a straw man, if you will. We looked at the materials that have been produced in the last few sessions that some of you attended in these sessions. We tried to refresh it, also based on conversations she's had with some of you since she's been in place last fall. And so we tried to put together this master list that says draft FY 2021 slash 2022 council priority years, and then we grouped them. We just took a stab and tried to group them to create some coherence. So they weren't just a laundry list. But we tried to group them and it's sort of what would be kind of a natural sequence of topics underneath that category. Which is very typical in strategic planning, just sharing that with you. Some cities call those key result areas or key performance areas, what have you. And what changes underneath those are the objectives. But the, the category itself doesn't always really change. So what we wanted to do, what we wanted to do tonight, using this as a straw man, right? This is not laminated. Is to have a discussion. And this is a little bit like making spaghetti. We're trying to avoid, uh, doing any voting. We're trying to create a consensus and focus more on the what, not so much the how. Because the outcome of tonight is a sketch that Reina and the staff will then start to put the how together. We don't want a project plan tonight, in other words. That's, I'm not sure that's a good use of your time. But focus more on the what. And just because you talk about it, doesn't necessarily mean you're going to move forward with it. But you don't know that until you talk about it. So think of this process as a good exchange of ideas as colleagues. What do you think about this? What do they think? And my role is just to keep the conversation moving. So we put them together in no particular order, um, and we know that first one is a real uh, popular item in the community. You all talked.
Popular, there's a, that's a good way to put it.
Um, it is, right? It is. And, um, to have it, we don't want the whole night though, to be dominated by that, because that could, that could consume all the energy in the room. If you look at that list, um, just one final point. We want to try to get to all these. And what Raina and I thought about doing, boy, we put this list together, we think it's really important that you identify which of these are really most important before you start adding new things to the list. Because the page is not blank, and I think you see this by evidence of what she's put together, that there's already a lot of things in the queue. So it's not as though the page is blank and we go, okay, what, and Raina's not waiting for, for Mayor and Council to say, here are the priority. There's already some things underway. So we're trying to build the cars and move down the road. So this is a little messy and that's the nature of these, but we've allocated a good amount of time for you to just have a conversation. I'm going to just try to keep the conversation moving. So we don't get stuck. So, okay?
Doesn't a lot of these things kind of spill into each other, Patrick? I mean, if you look at, you know, the, uh, land use and housing aspect, the first item. Um, whatever we do for, for, for long term, uh, whenever we finish the housing element or doing a new town center specific plan or whatever that looks like, it's going to incorporate some of those concepts of quality of life and financial stability and public safety, all those. I mean, it's like, it's like, that one doesn't get separated from everything else. It's part of everything.
Great point, Vice Mayor. You're absolutely right. There is so much overlap to what you do as community builders. What we're trying to do tonight is at least isolate a conversation on these items in particular, you all recognize this is part of a larger, um, framework about what you're doing as community builders. We don't want to get lost in all of that, because then there's no direction. So we're trying to isolate a conversation on these items in particular. But you're absolutely right. There's always, there's spillover. So when we look at that first one, land use and housing, uh, again, complete estate required housing element update, that's mandated and there's money attached, right? There's a kind of a financial impact from doing that. You all mentioned this to me. Thoughts about this? I know this, this is a really sensitive and popular topic.
You know, the, the whole, the whole concept is we've got to go through the process, decide how we're, we're going to do that process and get as many people in the community involved as possible to get their voices in. I mean, it's, it's about letting everybody know what's happening and have the bright minds be able to speak their minds and hear them.
Okay. So there's a notion of public input, that process, how you get, gather that input, whether it's in person or online, community outreach. And input, I should say, so, okay?
There's a lack of understanding, I think, though, among the public about what this is all about, how this goes about. And I think we have to do a really good job of communication and education, uh, in order to have people from the community involved, because otherwise you may get just a very, you know, small group of people and the rest of people just throw their hands up. You want to make sure we get a, a wide cross section of, of, uh, citizens to be involved in this process and all of the processes we have coming up, really.
Particularly regarding the first element, the housing element, I mean, the citizens have got to understand we either do this and we get X or we don't do this and it's Y. And, and one of the, one of the ramifications for both. I mean, and so that, that, that it's got to be a, a pretty broad, open communication. So everybody really understands. So they can't say they didn't know.
The, the problem, the problem with the why part of that is that there's no defined why. You know, what, what do we lose if we don't? What is it? Transportation funds? Is it, you know, what, what is the, what's the bottom line of the why that you're talking about?
It's got to be quantified as well as we're able to, because that's, it's, it's, there's a lot of unknowns associated with that.
So you, you're saying, I think this is a perfect example of the notion of how you, what you say and how you say it and to, to who. This is, you need a marketing strategy for the idea in, in of itself to communicate it. That the why's whats and hows. And I would just offer, I think sometimes, and I'm just offering this as a general comment, is a good reminder, you're not the audience for your message. Government tends to talk in acronyms and shorthand, and it's overwhelming to people. Then they throw their hands up because they're talking, you know, this reference to the code and the state law and lots of numbers and letters. And I think to the public, it just seems like it's overwhelming. So I'm just offering that as you message this out to the community formally about the public participation. I think it's trying to understand how will this create some interest beyond maybe people that are already interested, um, to, so they participate. So they know what's at risk.
Lot, lot of people in town think Rena is our city manager. No, I mean, seriously, it's a, you know, you're right about acronyms. I come from a company where our, our acronyms were in a Bible that thick in, in which they kept adding to, um, and so, uh, now that I'm retired, I can speak English again, back, I'm back in the, in the public eye. And, uh, and we're back to acronyms. So it is, it is a difficult thing for people to understand, even for us to understand in a lot of respects. Um, so, um, I think, I think people have to understand that the cause and effect. You know, what the consequences are if we don't do what we need to do. And what are we able to bear?
I think this also goes back to what we were talking about a little earlier though, which is it ties into staff and resources, right? So you've got, we've already got our budgets. Uh, we'll be working on the new one for next year, but you have to think about how much time staff can allocate to being able to help get the word out. The infrastructure that we have in place as far as technology and how we're actually pushing that out, um, to get the community engaged, because that's, that's really lacking. Um, but I think we have to kind of temper that with how much time staff really has to actually do it. And do we get an intern? Um, do we hire somebody part-time to do it, but we, to market it, you have to have the resources. So I think it hinges on that as well.
And where, and where do you, where do you do that? That's, that's the other question. What are the platforms that we're going up? That everybody participates in. That's the hard part. There are people on Nextdoor that don't participate on Facebook and, and vice versa. You know, where, where is that? Where, where does that all go?
I think it has to be all of them. You have to do, you have to do all avenues of.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Yeah, what cities are finding, mass media doesn't work anymore. It's micro-targeting. It's a marketing concept that's local government. You don't just have residents, you have demographics. And so how you design your marketing strategy to enlist at least input from people has to be strategic.
But the problem, the problem is our, our demographics are voters.
Right. But I'm talking about how, where people are consuming content, as you said, Mayor.
Oh, that, oh, yes, okay.
Absolutely. So it, there's a, there's a concept in marketing, it's called spray and pray. Well, let's send everything out to everything and we hope that we get a response. What governments are finding is that's often not really affordable and it's not having the impact. They're trying to be more selective and using different channels. It's not just all online. We know that, because some people aren't online. So how do you, how are you more strategic? So there's the process itself, it would seem about the housing element. Then there's the marketing of how you're gathering input. Which is what is what you're talking about, because you want to make sure the process is credible. And you also recognize, I think, Mayor, that there's always going to be some people, there's never enough participation. So how do you balance, as, uh, Councilmember Tillman said, how do you balance internal constraints for resources of staff time or just fiscal resources with process? At what point do you just have to ship the idea? Because you keep going out and going out. That's sometimes what communities do. They're looking for unanimity and it may just be a, and I, again, I, I know this issue is, is very popular. It's just, it's that balance about how much input and outreach do you do with the balance that you've got to meet a deadline? I'm just offering that, you know, uh, just, and I've seen this in other jurisdictions where they it's just, it's challenging. It just is. Even in the best of times with COVID, just complicates it.
You would think we would have some, somewhat of a, of an advantage being as small a city as we are for of being able to disseminate information, but that's not the case.
Yeah.
There are a lot of people that.
Can I clarify, can I clarify something? Are, are we intending to set priorities at this point? Or, I mean, we, we, we've gone through an hour so far, so I'm wondering, we have an hour left.
Yeah.
What are, what are you trying to get as a deliverable here?
We want to make sure there's, if these priorities are supported, we want to have a, we, I think it's important that you all have a conversation about each of these items. Our goal is to try to get through all of these. Make sure that the council is supportive of this, so Reina has some direction to keep these items moving forward. I don't think we're going to be able to, uh, because of the two hour time limit, at least, uh, put schedule around that about timing, but and you're right, we probably need to move on from this because there's a lot of other items, but we want to try to get through as many as possible. And if there's something you want to take off this list that's on here, this is the time to have a conversation about it.
I mean, complying with the law should be a priority. So I think that's pretty much a given. Unless someone's going to say we shouldn't, and then we can move on.
Yeah, thank you. Good point. Uh, so I'm going to thank you for that, um, Councilmember. Uh, the ADU ordinance, other thoughts about that? I know these topics you've had discussions about before. We just want to make sure and reaffirm that this is still supported by this council to keep moving forward.
That's kind of a subset of, uh, of the housing, uh, conversation. So that, I mean, it's, it's, it's part of the whole.
It's a little different though. This, the, your sheet indicates that it's mandated and it's not. So that's, that's incorrect. It's optional.
Or say, it can soon become mandated.
No, it, it's not.
Well, judging by the conversations I'm having out there, there's going to be a lot coming down that, uh, maybe.
If, if we do nothing, then the default position is that the city ordinances get superseded by whatever passes on the state. So it's not mandated that we do anything. We can do nothing here.
But if we do nothing, how do we, don't we leave ourselves open to the state?
Yes, that's correct, but the, this is not mandated in the way that the housing element is mandated. There's no penalty for not doing anything. Not doing your housing element, there's a penalty. Those are, a, a mandate with no penalty is not a mandate.
Okay, thoughts about that? Obviously, it's still evolving with the state's trying to do. Uh, the next one, I'm sorry?
It is evolving and it's, there will be something presented that will be challenging for us, but that, that's what the state's going to do. I, I concur with Jeff.
I mean, and, and the really, the, the question here is, do you want to dedicate staff time to crafting an ordinance where our ability to exercise latitude is about a millimeter wide? The state has already occupied the space here almost entirely. Our ability to, to have a, have a say that's different than what's been mandated is, is limited and quite significantly, I would say. We had a, you know, we talked about this about a year and a half ago and the conclusion was, what the hell is the point? Because they've already occupied the entire space. So, I mean, I agree it's important, but if we're, if we have a scarcity of staff time, I don't know what, and we, we no longer have a community development director to assist with this drafting, I'm going to say it's probably not the highest priority.
And I, I concur. It's not the highest priority, but it is, again, a subset of how we might be able to meet some of our housing element numbers. Is the ordinance important at this point? No, it's not, it's not the highest priority right now.
Okay. I'll move on here. General plan, safety and circulation element updates. That's a new item. Thoughts about that item?
Can you elaborate?
I'll, I'll turn it over to Rena. Thank you, Councilmember Juan, for the details on that.
Actually, and I, I will say that ultimately it will be mandated, so that one I should have had mandated. And the timing on it will depend on exactly how we move through the components of the housing element update. But it is very likely that as a result of the housing element update, we will be required, not only the regular updates of our general plan, but in relatively short order, the general plan, safety and circulation elements will have to be updated as well. So it's a follow-on to that housing element piece. And those will, those two components of the general plan will come up first in terms of requirement to update.
Probably a requirement, you just need to sequence it in a little bit after. Seems pretty normal.
Just a reminder.
Okay. All right, I want to move on. So just we move on to public safety is the next category. There's four items there. The update, to update the local hazard mitigation plan.
This is already in flight, right? Nothing to do here other than keep doing what we're doing.
Yes, we are largely through that, but it is a current priority that had come up. It's mostly funded through a grant and is two-thirds.
What does that do, Rena?
It, it doesn't have a completely external deadline, but if we don't get it done in relatively short order, then we will not be eligible for any FEMA funding that would come as a result of having that plan in place. And so it is our plan to have it done, I think, by this fall. It has a community outreach component as well, so we'll have a draft plan in the next month and then we'll do some outreach around it and then get it approved all the way through FEMA and then we'll be able to use it for potential funding for mitigation efforts.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is the EOC, the emergency operations plan. Let's update that.
Yeah, can we, let's elaborate on that.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Our emergency operations plan is at least a decade old, maybe longer. And really just needs to be updated to match our current situation, our current interactions in the county, how things are handled in the county and what we would do if we had an emergency. And frankly, right now, we would just, that document would not be at all a help for us if we ever had to stand up an emergency operations center. And so we, we need to, to update it. We've seen more weather events, more wildfires, more earthquake events, little blunderings. And it, it would be wise for us to update that emergency operations plan going forward.
What's the regular cadence for the update?
There is no specified regular update cycle.
Industry standard?
No, probably every 10 years. We are, we are due or overdue for sure.
What's the, what's the time commitment?
For the update or staff? This is one where we would potentially want to look at bringing in a consultant. So the staff commitment would be less. But I don't know what the total number of hours would be.
Maybe then the dollar commitment is more appropriate if we're talking about outsourcing.
Yeah, the dollar commitment is under 25, right around 25,000.
Okay.
The next item is to.
Wait a minute, along with that, isn't there some sort of city and council and staff training? Because I remember I went through it some time ago. And just to get a, a good overview of what we should do and or should not do, who's the spokesperson and so forth. I know it's pretty, that kind of detail is pretty much involved in that, but there's also a formalized training. I know we had it both at City Hall and over at the City of Concord. Each session, as I recall, lasted at least a couple of hours each, so.
We're available for generally how incident command systems and emergency operations works. And that's available and I can send that information out to the council. There would also then be specific training, much shorter in nature, about what's in our exists, what would be in our new plan, which is just a reminder of here's the role under our plan, here's how we're going to do that communication.
Well, my, my point is, is that we have new members on the council and we have new staff members that probably haven't even seen the book, you know?
Sure. I think Councilmember Deas to the National Emergency Management System, the NIMS training you had, and that is now done online, not in person.
It seems like this is pretty much just general GNA overhead at this, at this level of commitment.
As far as a deliverable, something we want to focus on this year, which is, which is the whole thing is goal setting. I concur that it's a deliverable. I also think it's a priority. I mean, given the wildfires that are happening, given some of the feedback I've heard from people up in Oakhurst who are border to, to grasslands, there's a lot of, a lot of public concern about this decision, how we can respond, what are the ingress, negress and some of the conversations around this? So, I mean, this is something that I see that our, our community clearly wants us to have a handle on. And if this is 10 years old, it's, I think it's a, a, a good priority to put in something we need to do in the, in the near term. So putting it off next year.
I agree, unless, unless we become somehow self-sufficient in that, in this time.
And remind me, it, it remind me of the, is there some element of having our council members trained in the CERT function as well? Because that was, I know that was a big priority back when I went through all of that.
There is no requirement, but it's always a positive. So community emergency response team is a way to stretch our resources by having community members who are trained more in emergency response functions. So I don't know necessarily that the council per se in CERT. You would have your own training as council members, but certainly we could look at reinvigorating a local CERT.
No, and I would agree, I would agree, but it'd be nice for the city council to know who's actually going to be the one out in front leading the charge.
Yeah, the last I heard.
I think it resides up on the third floor at City, City Hall.
You can correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but the last time I had a meeting on safety and it was a neighborhood watch program last year, excuse me, the CERT program was kind of in flux. The people who were in charge are no longer in charge and so maybe you know something.
Absolutely true. That's absolutely true.
Okay, so it sounds like there's support for moving this item forward.
Absolutely.
The next item, yeah, the next item was implement NICSIL for improved emergency communication with the community. That's a new endeavor, new undertaking. Rena, you want to share a little bit more on that?
For those of you who don't know, NICSIL is essentially a, a, a current technology version of a reverse 911. It's one more tool in the toolkit for ways for us to be able to communicate out to our community either via text or via phone call. People can sign up for the service and you can then get notified if there's a major street closure or some other kind of emergency, that missing child that we had earlier this, whenever that was, not too long ago. So it's just, it's another tool in the toolkit for us to be able to communicate out in terms of emergency across many platforms.
How much is it?
It's about 50, where's my list? It's about, I'm going to say it's about $5,800 a year. Couple hundred dollars one-time setup fee.
I think it goes hand in hand with the, the one above, so I'd be in favor of that.
Doesn't this overlap with all other communication distribution systems that are in place already?
It, it can be seen as that because it is a new potential cost. The question is, do we want to bring it forward? And is that a priority for the council or is it not an avenue you should pursue?
I mean, I think you need to have more information, how duplicative is of, or how duplicative is it regarding other systems that are already in place that we have access to? If we already have access to widespread communication blasts, you know, you'd want to see why this is better or why we need this to be additive. I don't think there's enough information presented.
But in order for us to figure that out, wouldn't we need to just move it forward and get that information?
Well, no, I mean, to prioritize it is one thing, but to do an assessment is something else, right? So if you want to do an assessment, that's fine. We should like get information and find out. But before you do that, I think it would be premature to say that we should put this as a priority.
Maybe somebody can explain to me what priorities are then.
I have, I have an attendee who would like to speak, which would be our chief, who is the person who would be able to better answer this question. So Patrick, I'm moved.
Sure.
Hello. I, I just wanted to weigh in on the question of is NICSIL a repetitive way of communicating? And, and I will say that at the county level, there is a similar service, but to get to that service, to use that service is a lot of red tape. And for example, the, the missing child, you know, we had blasted out information about the missing child on Nextdoor and on Facebook and, and that only reaches so many people. Our next step was going to go to the county and ask them to use their emergency alert system, but it's probably an hour delay when it, for us to be able to use it because there's a lot of layers of approval. It is a county-wide system that they draw down into specific regions, but it, there, there is quite a delay. So my suggestion was to bring on NICSIL because there have been a number of occasions that we can use the reverse 911 at the, at our fingertips to quickly get information to our residents. You know, things such as the protests that we had and the street closures, we, you know, we could push those out. We've had a couple of missing persons. But it's just a quicker way and a bigger reach than Nextdoor and Facebook and Twitter. Because those, those really depend upon people that are social media savvy, whereas NICSIL just requires you to have a phone, either a landline or a cell phone.
And if I can add, I think Councilmember Juan, the chief and I spoke about this earlier and one thing she didn't convey is in that social media market versus NICSIL, NICSIL kind of hits the older generation that doesn't really use social media and our population in our community has a, a large percentage of people who don't really use social media for means of communication. So she was looking at trying, I think, to make sure things that go out hit variety of people in our community that use different ways to communicate. This is senior population, the older senior population.
And the folks have to opt in.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The folks have to opt in.
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
It's not a, it's not a forced push.
No, but we would do outreach for that, you know, as much as we can.
I would say we could move this thing forward.
Yeah, this, this is, this needs to be a, a priority item, if that's the appropriate word.
I concur.
Okay, let's move on then.
The next item is improved pedestrian slash traffic safety.
And that's ongoing now anyway, isn't it?
I don't think there's been a good update in a, in like six months or something.
Yeah, six months, because we're still looking into that, into the speed on Clayton Road. That's part of this, right?
Pretty broad.
It is very broad and really it's just confirming that it is a continued priority for the council and we'll bring forward specific projects with specific recommendations for funding. But again, this list is, in addition to being, you know, new things or things that we're bringing forward, it is a reflection of a lot of the council's conversation in the last year. I didn't want to drop off things that were simply sort of moving along, not really anything happening right at this moment, because I felt like that was not reflective of the level of energy it had had in the last year. And so in this case, it's a relative, relatively high level goal. It is not a specific project, but I did want to, I, I personally included it in order to have that reflect back to the council, that that is something that the council has put a priority on in the last, at least year to two years and beyond.
Sounds good.
Yeah, it's a, it's a doable thing, so.
Okay. I suggest we move on to the next category, financial stability. First item on there is develop a long-term financial plan. Thoughts about that?
If, if I could just add, so the first, well, all three of those are things that you'll see just say 2020. Those were things that you identified in your, those people on the council at the time, in your session with the city manager last February. And so I again, wanted to make sure that I reflected those back to the council. We are planning to move forward with those unless somebody says by majority vote that you, for some reason, don't want them. But I wanted to make sure that they were reflected back to you as part of the overall sort of general plan based on the conversations in the last year.
Do we, I mean, I'm going to sound a little oblivious here, but do we have a long-term financial plan in place right now? Is that, is there, is there something like that that exists?
We have not done as much long-term financial projections in the past in this city. So we started working on that last year and we will bring those forward. I'm working with the finance director to ensure that we have longer-term financial projections included in the budget process that we will start in a few months.
You know, I'm just going to reflect upon my experience now, what, three months in as, as a city council member. And I remember the first meeting with you, Rena, and all the city staff and with Chief Warren. And one of the things that was painfully obvious is how much we pay our staff significantly lower than market rates relative to our neighboring cities. And what was painfully obvious is how tight to the dollar we, we budget things. I think there was $425 left in our budget after we were done at the end of our last budget cycle. We are just tight, tight, tight as far as reserves. And I'm sure that's pretty consistent with most cities across California. But, you know, I, I would love to see a long-term financial plan, what it is we want to see as far as our, our reserve and what additional avenues may exist for revenue generation to help with, relieve some of the stresses that we have. So that's, I'm, that's definitely needs to be a priority. We need to discuss that.
And what's the definition of long-term? Five years, seven years, 10 years, 15?
Typically, we would do at least a five-year projection.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's something more realistic. Right.
I think much beyond five years is kind of just guessing. I mean, all of these things are just, yes, these are still priorities. We can move on.
I agree.
Just a side note, the financial plans at cities, once they adopt them, they really create a different conversation when you start looking at your revenue and expenses beyond the, the budget year.
when you start looking at your revenue and expenses beyond the, the budget year. About how things are trending and some of it is speculative, obviously, further out, but it does start to create opportunities for different conversations.
That's, it provides a vehicle to at least start looking at it. And obviously you must update it annually because things change that you never even, you thought about or encountered.
Right. Uh, okay, so it sounds like that's all cool with the financial stability. Next item is the quality of life fireworks, community events, community survey and campus.
Who, who put on fireworks?
That would be me. I had a conversation with Mayor McGallion from Concord. And last year, uh, there was a problem with the, you know, fireworks in neighborhoods all over. In fact, even in, in Clayton, till three o'clock in the morning, people were complaining, even in my neighborhood, things were going off. And so he's going to be holding or trying to hold a fireworks celebration, if you will, at the pavilion. And he was wondering if we wanted to do something as a joint, the Fourth of July, if we could go in with them. He has enough money to, to do a smaller event. But if we come up with some money there, maybe ten grand, whatever it is, then he would be able to put the fireworks up higher where neighborhoods in Clayton could see them. And that the parking lot would become a, a safe zone for people to watch the fireworks there. This is the initial idea, seeing as we're not going to do a parade this year or be able to gather unless it's safely. This was his idea. So I asked Rena to put that on here to at least have a discussion about it because it does involve some money. And it's an interesting idea with regard to, to fireworks and try to, to mitigate some of the neighborhood fireworks that were going on last year.
And I, I think you'd have to separate the idea of mitigation. I don't, I mean, I'm not a prognosticator, but I, I doubt the fireworks show will mitigate people's desire to do private fireworks illegally in their yards. I mean, that's going to happen regardless.
Right, but if you go back.
Whether or not the idea is a good idea, to me is independent of any potential mitigation, which I would be surprised.
If you go back, if you go back to the year prior to COVID, uh, the, the fireworks displays were not, uh, I mean, you weren't in a war zone.
Yeah, it was definitely more last year. It's definitely more. But I mean, I don't think having a show, the people who are, who want to do illegal fireworks are not the kind that are going to gather and go to see a fireworks show. Like those aren't the same people.
No, I agree, but, but history tells us that as long as people have something to do, at least, at least it won't turn out that you're living in a war zone. Again, you know, this is his idea. It's, it needs to be flushed out. The question was whether Concord, whether Clayton wanted to go in in conjunction with Concord to try and do something for the Fourth of July to bring some sense of normalcy back to people. And, you know, I, it's, it's an idea I'm bringing just to discuss with all of you.
And the reality is, Jeff, there's no real fireworks display anywhere near Clayton right now that you could take your family to. And if it's coming out of the pavilion and becomes a family event, I think there would be a lessened appetite for, for having to do it on your own cul-de-sac.
You know, people come up, people come up here at Peacock Creek and, and go to the overlook out there on Pebble Beach. And they watch, you know, the fireworks displays from several areas, one of them being Concord. And they're not going to do, uh, the fireworks the way they did them in Concord last year or two years ago. So anyway.
Did anyone do it last year? Did anyone do it last year? I don't remember. I don't think there were hardly any, right?
I don't think so. That's why, that's why, again, people went off the deep end with regard to fireworks. And then, you know, come Fourth of July, it's very dry. So, you know, again, it's just for discussion. If it's an interesting idea to explore, it'd be great to, uh, to do that. If you, if you don't feel like it, then we won't do it. I, I would love to have something for the Fourth of July that people could point to. If this isn't it, fine, but that's why we're putting it out there.
I thought we weren't voting really on anything today.
No, no, this is just whether or not we need to.
I'm totally fine with keeping it on the list. That's what you're doing.
I, yeah, I would, I would say let Concord pay for it. We just talked about how tight our budget is. They got money.
It's fair.
Let them pay for it. I mean, they're, they got our, they got our money ten to one, so. You know, you want to go, you know, get, go in ten percent, maybe, I don't know, something, something unreasonable. I, I don't think it's worth the money.
Peter? Jim? I've been going to discuss it. I think it's worthy to discuss it.
Ten percent. I think we're lucky if we have two percent.
Yeah.
But there are funds.
Yeah, so, you know, this ain't, this ain't, this is an asymmetric relationship here.
All right.
They can pay.
Okay. We all, are we in agreement to let that go then?
Seems like it.
I mean, that's just me. You guys, if you guys are all for it, you know, I think.
I'm personally, I'm personally for it. I think that it'd be a good idea for us to explore an idea that might work for our two cities that we could promote. Uh, some family friendly.
Hey, I mean, if they, if they have it, I would totally tell people, hey, there's the show. Go take a look.
Yeah, but it would, it wouldn't carry, it wouldn't carry our, our name. Nor, nor would you be able to see them from anywhere except the parking lot.
So what's the appetite of the council? Do you want to see maybe what the quote the mayor brings back from the mayor in Concord and see what they're asking for?
Yes, I would like the quote.
Financial contribution? Yeah, and also this, this is a brand new idea and I'm, I'm glad to see it. I'm, I'm not sure what the interest of, of budget is, but let's figure it out. I mean, it's, let's, let's take a look at it and bring it back at it after you brought some more information there.
Yeah, I'm interested to know what the numbers are.
Well, let me, let me look at the numbers then. How's that?
That'd be great.
You know, I, if, if it doesn't work out, then we don't, we don't have the budget for it. Then we'll just take a pass.
Okay. Moving on to the next item, support for restarting community events.
I think that's important if, if, if we can work in, in conjunction with the CBCA to restart community events. I, the, the concern I would have is the long-term future of that. I know it says here ongoing, but my, my concern would be once CBCA is well-heeled again, if they would then need us to continue that. Uh, and, and/or the idea that the city is putting on these events. And we've always pointed to the fundraising events that the CBCA does as being the, the sponsor.
Well, which events are we talking about?
Yeah, I'm confused.
The events like the, the parade and the concerts?
The parade, the parade is a city event.
Yeah, yeah, I know. So are we talking about city events or are we talking about CBCA?
They're talking about, Rena shaking her head. You're talking about Oktoberfest and, and.
That's CBCA, right?
The event.
CBCA. I'm sorry, Laura. I'm sorry. I was talking over you. What?
I said the city, the, the Fourth of July parade is not an official city event. It just happens that there are some people who happen to work for the city and other community members who have served on your planning commission and trails and landscaping committee that come together as a community committee to put that together.
So, so are you talking about that is, is part of this?
Yeah, there is no city events in our community. They're all done by nonprofit groups or community organizations. The city staff obviously helps support, facilitate and, and makes all of those things ensure that they are successful between the police department staffing, our city maintenance department, myself and any permit coordination. So that, that happens, but these are not the city staff putting on events. Even the Clayton cleans up is done by the Clayton Pioneer and Republic Services.
So what, I don't understand this bullet then. It says it's ongoing as, as if it's been on here for years. What does support for restarting community events mean?
So, um, really, I think the, the goal for putting this on here is to say, what, if anything, does the council have an interest in, in doing more than we have potentially in the past to support community events in this period where we've had such an uneven ability to do them? And as we work back toward a more, whatever, normal.
When we say more, when you say more, do you mean like financial support?
That's a, a question of, you know, what, what is the council's interest in it? Is there an interest in looking at potential financial support? Is there an interest in, you know, other types of support? I mean, it's, it's, it's more than just saying, yeah, it's great that CBCA is doing events that, that we're probably going to continue to do regardless.
Well, I mean, there's only so much that, you know, that we're talking about here. Cause when we put support here on this page, what, who put it here and what did we mean? Supports, support here is, that word is doing a lot of work. So if we mean money, that's one conversation. If we mean like easing the fees and permitting or lending staff time or relaxing ordinances, I mean, those are all available to us. So it just depends on like what we're actually talking about. And I think they take different flavors depending on what it is.
So the idea at the highest level is, is there an interest in some sort of resource, additional resource commitment above and beyond what we've done in the past, which has been really relatively minor on these community-based events. Um, and it could be any of the things that you've said, but is there, you know, a sufficient interest in the kind of kickstarting the process on these community events to have it stay at that, at a sort of rise to a new level on the council's priorities? Or is there not?
I would think the CBCA, as the sponsor of most of the events, not all, but most, would need to prepare a proposal.
Yeah, in, in the past, this, the only event that the city has really spearheaded has been the Fourth of July parade. And that, that's it. The rest of it has all been pretty self-sufficient by the CBCA or in the case of the concerts in the Grove, uh, by the amount of money and that the, uh, concert promoter has raised and put into that account.
And the Pioneer, yeah, the Pioneer did clean, cleans up, the church does the box, the race car derby. The, you know, the, the Veterans Association does the Memorial Day ceremony. I mean, they're, they're done by all these different groups. So if someone, I mean, when we say support, that's really too broad. I mean, if, if the CBCA wants assistance or needs assistance or would enjoy or appreciate assistance, you can't really, I mean, it, it's weird, not weird, but it's, um, you would expect that direction or that request to come from them and something that we would actually discuss rather than us like, you know, telling them, here's what we'll do for you. Like if they need something, come to the table with a proposal.
Have we had any requests of that sort?
No, but I can tell you that the, the concert promoter has been looking for ways to do it uh, under the current restrictions, including going outside the city limits in order to put on the, the concerts.
So what, what I would like to suggest, just in the realm of time management, since I'm the one who put that on there and it is, appears not to be sufficiently specific, is to say that for that piece, um, you know, let me come back with a more specific recommendation or recommendations that, um, provides specific, um, requests for direction from the council rather than the very broad, because I don't think that's, it's not quite getting at what I was trying to get at. And I don't want to try to do that on the fly because this is not the, the purpose of this meeting. So I would say, can I just pull it to the side and, and let me work on it and it can come back?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Yeah, the next one is the completed community survey.
What is the community survey for?
So in prior cities, um, where I've been, um, I've seen community surveys used very effectively in terms of both one-time and ongoing, um, uh, information gathering from the community regarding typically things around values, priorities and willingness to pay. If we are ever going to talk about whether there are additional funding mechanisms that are to be considered. Um, and so, um, the question is, is there an interest in considering a community survey? Again, this would come back with a specific proposal, but is there an interest at all in this notion of a community survey that would be looking at, um, kind of gauging values and particularly, um, or potentially willingness to pay?
So has your survey been a mail-out survey? Has it more been an electronic survey historically, Rena?
Um, it's been a, um, traditional, uh, random digit dial statistically significant, um, scientific survey. Um, so it's, um, done to ensure that you get a representative sample of the community. And we poll typically phone numbers and cellphone numbers and, um, ensure that you get representation across the, the community as a whole.
And that's a, a service we would pay to make that happen?
Yes, there are lots of different ways to do it.
Do you have a, I, I, and a specific question or this is just a general concept in the future, uh, in case we want that type of feedback?
So my question is, is, I, I personally have found them to be valuable in the communities I've worked in. Question is, do you all think that would be valuable? And if you generally think so, then it will do its next level. If you don't, let's take it off the plate and I won't worry about it.
No, I, I, I've, I've always thought that there is a, gotta be a good way for people to communicate their opinions. So if you put a question or, or an idea out there, people can, can weigh in on that. Um, whether it's through this random survey, which you're talking about, or actually some type of electronic poll. Some people need to be able to have that, the voices heard or feel like they've got a chance to weigh in. So I'm, I'm game.
Yeah.
I mean, do all the surveys you want all the time with all the questions. You can go nuts on surveys. It's pretty easy. If you want to do a survey, just go bonkers.
And how broad of a.
Like, that doesn't even matter. Like, if you have a question, just go ahead and pose it. You can do whatever you want.
Is there, is there a cost per, per record?
That's, that's the next, that's the next question.
Yeah.
There is, and of course there are scaling options for that as well. So, I mean, if you're asking, do I want to, I'm not really asking, can I do a survey monkey? Cause I, I can do that by myself. Um, not that I would ask you if you wanted to do it, but it doesn't really require much in the way of effort. It's really more, is there a desire to do a more formalized effort? And, uh, is that a priority for the council to have that kind of broad community survey? So not on the downtown property, not on the housing element, but on, you know, a, a wide variety of topics relating to, um, community life in Clayton. And, uh, kind of setting the table for additional discussions beyond that.
What's about a max figure from the cities that you've done it in previously for this type of survey?
Fifteen to twenty-five thousand.
And I can't get fireworks? What the, um, okay. You know, if you find this, you, you know, you have the history that you find this to be beneficial. And if that's, if that's the case, I, I agree with you and I agree with Peter as well that, you know, just put questions out there. And I'm not sure we can go willy-nilly with, with surveys based on cost.
But it seems kind of strange. Like, that seems oddly high.
It seems a lot, like it's a lot. And, and Clayton, and Clayton maybe it won't be that high. I'm, I'm not sure, but.
That seems oddly high.
Rena, is it, is it possibly because of the number of households that were hit or the numbers that, the numbers that were contacted from the prior cities? Is that what drove up the price?
Uh, not, not, I mean, yes and no, because it's a percentage of the, um, community. But it really has to do with hiring someone who is, um, an expert in market research and knows how to write appropriate questions and how to put together the appropriate survey and then can do the analysis afterwards. So. That's, that's really it.
Yeah, that, that, that's kind of, I don't know, seems a little overboard. I don't, I don't know if we need that level of, uh, depth on survey generation. You can do a push-pull how you want. I, I, I mean, you can get questions out pretty easily at a very low cost. I mean, I think some of you guys even have done this. It's pretty easy and low cost, like whether you need a data analysis person on a survey for forty-four hundred households. Seems, uh, that seems crazy high to me. Like if you said it was like a thousand bucks, that'd be more what I was expecting.
A lot of cities use these, to Rena's point, as a baseline to kind of get a feel for where the community is about particular issues. And then they do them every couple of years to see if they're making progress. It's input about public priorities. It's also, I think, to Mayor, Vice Mayor Clovin's point, it's kind of demystify the role of local government because you're getting out and you're asking questions. And there's several different versions of how you can do it, your sampling method, you need to get into the science of it. Uh, there's, and I don't, I, I don't do these. There are firms that do these and they base it on the size of the jurisdiction. And then what your sampling method wants, and they create a report with what they found would be the most preference of residents. You can customize the questions about particular areas. So there's value in that. But as we all know, surveys are only.
But as we all know, surveys are always the feedback that you get and what you decide to do with it. So it's sometimes reaffirming for jurisdictions, for councils, like, yep, we're on the right track. And other times it can be, oh, they really do have an appetite. As Raina said, and as you're going to explore in your financial plan, you might look down the pike and see that you might have financial constraints. This survey data may be a good reference point just to see where people's heads about certain elements that they want to see for quality of life. And it gets beyond the anecdotal.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking you'd have like a page on the website and you just rotate it like once a week or something like Bresson does in Concord. I mean, you could, you can survey whatever you want, really like pretty much free like that. I don't know, then it's, it's the cost benefit of spending the money. Like what's your delta on value?
I think we heard earlier, Jeff, that, that there's a large percentage, there's seventeen hundred voters that are seventy-five years old and older that aren't necessarily going to be filling out a survey monkey or being on the city website. So, I mean, trying to get the right cross section to get the answers across all the generations we have in Clayton. And I, I, I'm not, I, I, I'm not opposed to it. I will say that that's, that's, that's a high figure. I think all of us were kind of surprised by the value you presented. But if there is.
Yeah, I can get everyone.
Yeah, if there are questions to be answered that, that can help us along the lines of revenue generation or specific ideas of taxation or, or public uses or, or something like, I, 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 I would want as broad a coalition of answers as possible. So I'm, I'm hearing what, what, what's up and available.
I mean, yeah, you will have people who, that's not their speed, right? They're not going to use it. That's fine. I mean, that's just, you're never going to get everyone. Yeah, you're never going to get everyone. And, you know, if you want it to be perfect, I don't know. I just don't, I think perfect being the enemy of the good is not really the way to go. And you could get something that's effective, low cost, efficient for our city.
Why don't we, why don't we take a look at?
You're not going to get everyone on, you know.
Why don't we take a look at what this is going to actually cost? Can we do that?
I, I, I would actually, um, because I think we're spinning in the weeds on cost. I'm, I'm, I'm really kind of curious about content and an intent for what this might look like and what we're trying to accomplish from this before I could judge what the costs are. I really want to know what, what kind of questions, uh, Raina and us might be interested in asking the community and how, how best to get that information before I, I just summarily reject it.
So it sounds like there's an appetite. I'm sorry, Raina, go right ahead.
I was just going to say, so I, I, to offer, this was really targeted at the idea of a broad survey that could be repeated every so often that touched on a variety of topics as opposed to more targeted by subject or project, et cetera. So, you know, that, that's what I was trying to gain more perspective on from the council. What I'm hearing is, yes, we want to hear from the council. Yes, I mean, from the community. Yes, absolutely. These more targeted, quicker, less expensive items. And maybe we want to talk in the future about a broader survey, but it's not rising to the top of the list right now, particularly related to cost. That's sort of what I feel like, excuse me, I'm hearing in terms of feedback.
Dean is pretty accurate.
Okay, so on hold for now.
Just as, as Raina, I would love to see an example of a survey that has been sent out by one of your previous communities. So I just kind of get an idea of what that looked like and maybe some of the data associated with it. Awesome, thanks.
Okay, move on to the next item, which is the review of the cannabis ordinance.
Pardon me?
What's up?
Just a reminder that you said that you wish to have that brought back to the council meeting.
Right, and so that's a done deal, right? So.
Within flight, right?
Yeah, it's going to be there.
Again, I didn't, I, I just, I wanted to get a.
Unless, unless, unless you want to put it on the survey.
Nice one, Mayor. Moving on to the good governance, most of those are internal. The purchasing policy, the update, the employee handbook policies, which is all a risk management strategy. Update the city's IT infrastructure. The annual city manager's, city manager contingency fund for small unforeseen events. Improve employee recruitment and retention. The first one, the install technology to provide closed captioning of council meetings. And that seemed, thoughts about that one? That seems to be the one outward facing. The rest are more internal facing about kind of back office, if you will.
That one was a request that I had from two residents who do want to participate in the council meetings and said it's very difficult for them when they're trying to watch it live. They just have to wait in the minutes or we know what the minutes look like. So they're missing a lot of the content because they, they've asked if we can look into closed captioning for them instead.
Um, and I, I've done some research on that and it will be coming back. Again, this is just a capture to make sure that you know that it's on there. There are a range of costs with a range of quality and timeliness of that closed captioning. So I just haven't had a chance to bring that back, but I wanted to confirm that that was still on my list of things that had been asked. And it had also been asked, I believe in 2019 from another council member. I don't remember who it was at the moment. So it does need to come back and I, I have some data on that.
Thanks, Raina. Are there questions or comments, questions for Raina about the other items? That she is seeing as a priority for her under her, early here in her tenure to get some of this information to be current? Thoughts about these?
Is the employee handbook, because there just isn't one? I'm trying to understand what that is.
Oh, I think it's from like nineteen ninety-seven.
Okay.
It might need to be updated. It's, it's. Yeah. Do you see Mama's face? I don't know if you.
I saw it.
I said that, she was like, oh, no, 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 no. Yeah, that's why.
I think it's older than nineteen ninety-seven.
Yes, but in all fairness, there have been a bunch of pieces that have been added to it, just kind of stuffed in at the back of it. So there's, as things came up, somebody did it. So it has not been comprehensively done since the, I think, ninety-five era, ninety-three, ninety-five.
It's not good governance. Let me just put it to you that way.
Okay.
I'd be interested to see what the city manager comes up with for a contingency fund for small unforeseen events.
Um, I will quickly, and then I, I know you do have a few attendees in case you want to take public comment on this item. Um, I will say that in other cities, I have seen a small contingency item added to the city manager's budget for small thing. I mean, seriously, right now, it's like if I have to spend three hundred dollars to send someone to a training, I'm slightly concerned about my overall budget. And I guess we have a tight budget, but, but I think that's probably overboard. So I just wanted to raise the concept that that will come forward in the budget process unless you all tell me that I should not even bother bringing it forward. Um, and I can speak more in the future about why I think that's beneficial.
Okay.
So, well, there, yeah, we do want to make time for public comment. Just quickly, if there was an item that maybe wasn't discussed that you think may be worthwhile to discuss either tonight or to a future session? Something that's not on here. And again, remember this is gradual. So this is, this is for the foreseeable future. There's going to be things that come up or as you go through the budget process, you're going to have more in-depth discussions about things. Not everything here has a price tag to it. They're really about, you know, a policy or a process change or they're different dimensions. But if there was something that wasn't talked about that you wanted to talk about in particular, that maybe we can get through rather quickly. If, if not, maybe that's a time for another discussion you can have a conversation about. I'm just kind of throwing that out there.
You pretty much capture, well, I don't know what the others said, but you are pretty much captured in our many interviews, uh, what we were thinking.
Yeah. We tried to, as Raina and I put the agenda together in particular on this was, unless, unless there's an appetite, at least tonight, it's not if you don't speak now, you're not. But for tonight's discussion, we thought we'd go ahead and move on to public comment, if that's acceptable.
Yeah.
Obviously, Raina and I will, you know, there's some polish that needs to happen. This was a sketch that was intended for you to scrub and, and poke and, and process and have a discussion, so.
Sure.
Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you for a public comment, if that's all right?
Okay, and then that's what we'll do. I don't see any hands raised, Raina. Does anybody want to speak to these items here?
Don't yet see any hands raised. So if someone does want to speak, they can raise their hand and we will move them into the room. But if not, um, I don't believe that there is any. You did receive from me an email on public comment that we received in advance of the meeting. It's also on the website regarding ecological principles and a sustainable city.
I saw that, I saw that. So I guess nobody's jumping in, so we'll close that public comment period and bring it back. So now we just, uh, we just need to solidify the recommendation, right? There's no real voting going on here. Yes, 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 council member Tillman.
Maybe this is what we're going to get to, but at what point do we see what the priorities are and how we're accomplishing them, like throughout the year? What is the plan?
So you're all looking at me. I can tell on the Zoom, so I'll just. So, um, this, this list will get refined and it is essentially a consensus with a few changes that this is the, the, the list that I will be tacking up in front of my face so that I will keep it in mind. And then, um, you know, the, the council here in Clayton has gotten regular updates on priority items in a variety of ways over the years. A number of years ago, the prior city manager used to do this, this like twelve, fifteen, twenty page document on staff work and progress. And it had all these kinds that to me just seemed like it just got really unwieldy. Um, and so the goal would be potentially something like quarterly just to be able to provide an update to the council on here are the things, you know, and we can use this as the base. And then you can just, uh, if, uh, get updates on a quarterly basis, like here's where we are on these things. Here's what's happened since the last time, et cetera. Or if there's some other mechanism that the council would prefer, I'm happy to look at other ways that that information can be provided.
I just wanted to add, building on what Raina shared, that, you know, also I think what helps the council member Tillman, your point is, I, I think it's always a good practice that when there's a staff report that's related to an item on the goals, that it's mentioned in the staff report. So you know where the source about why it's in front of you. I think the more that you're reminded of that, it just shows these conversations. Because some of these items, as you all talked about, are going to be on a forthcoming agenda. I just think it helps you relate that, close the loop there. And also as you talk about it at a council meeting and say, this was in our set of goals that we do periodically. You know, so there's that update. The other thing I failed to mention earlier tonight, and I apologize, is that the benefit of doing this is despite everything else going on, progress is going to be made against these. So yes, you still have to be responsive in the moment. Who knows what's going to happen tomorrow or somebody standing at a council meeting about an issue? You still have to be responsive in the moment. You all know that. At the same time, this is about how you're being more intentional about things that are longer term, to be more proactive. And I think as you'll see, as your time on council and your partnership with Raina develops, you'll be able to forecast a little bit further into the future. Because you'll become more proficient and you'll start to see things come off the list. I work with a lot of jurisdictions at different stages. And with Raina coming on, you're at sort of at the, not the beginning, but you're early in your partnership. So getting clear of these priorities and as things come off the list and you start to think more broadly or more longer term, then the, then the list, if you will, starts to become a little bit more substantive in that way. Probably a little bit more strategy and a little less tactical. I'm just sharing that with you, but this is kind of your first visit to the gym as a group. And so it's building up capacity. And then each time you go, you become more proficient and you're longer term. Not that you'll be able to be out there in five or 10 years, but you may start to really think through, what are we trying to do about these issues? And how can we get out in front of them? So I just share that with you, the graduality of this, so I'll, I'll step back.
If, if I can just add to the council, of course, as staff works on any one of these things and we get into the, the more, you know, move it along, often that information is shared back to the city manager and it's included in your council weekly. You've seen some, I think, information already in the local hazard mitigation plan process. So that's another communication that would allow staff to, you know, keep you alerted as to where things are once we're actually working on them and getting into some of that. So that's another.
Okay.
I got to, I appreciate the idea that we have a report out. I think it was something that I asked for in my first year and the previous council decided that was too much work for staff to do a report out. So I'm looking forward to seeing it. I think that'd be good and it's a good way to keep ourselves accountable.
Anybody else on the council have comments, questions?
I just have one. It, I guess it kind of goes on a financial stability and maybe it's even part of that first bullet. But is, I'm, I'm assuming that staff is looking for money, grants, et cetera, that that's just something that you guys do continuously? Okay, I'm just, just wanted to throw it out there to make sure that that was on the radar. Money for the poor, yeah. Okay.
Um, we do search out, out grants where we can and when there's not an excessive matching requirement, quite frankly, because sometimes that undoes what we're trying to accomplish by looking for a grant. So, um, uh, we do, we do pay attention to that and we do look for a variety of sources.
Okay.
Anything else? Or are we wrap it up? No, going once, going twice, going. All right, well, thank you, Patrick.
No, she's saying, I think she's saying something.
Wait a minute, she's wax on, wax off. What, what's going on?
Try to catch your attention. There's, I don't know why I always think that this is the best way to get people's attention on Zoom, but I, I do it sort of instinctively and it's not helpful. Um, I want to just say, um, Patrick will have some closing comments as well, but I want to say thank you very much to the council for engaging for a couple of hours. I know that this can sometimes feel like it's either a repeat or we can't get to things or it's, you know, not valuable. It is extremely valuable for me to begin to hear more and more dialogue about what each of you sees in the community and sees as valuable. So I really appreciate it and I appreciate your time today. Uh, and I appreciate Patrick's assistance. I was very glad that I was able to, to bring him on board and, and get someone who could help kind of move us through this and not just me while I'm also trying to potentially think through, you know, sort of how do I pull forward some of the individual pieces of information that I was trying to recall as well? So thank you for that. And then Patrick, I don't know if you have any.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Raina. I appreciate the opportunity you provided me. Thanks to Mayor and Council for the opportunity to be in front of you. Um, I think what you're seeing as your partnership matures between you all, each other and with the, with the city man, with Raina, is you're trying to continually refresh your recipe for success. You know, it'll help to move, move the community forward. It's not just doing more of the same. You're having to reshuffle the deck. You all know that, both from state impacts and from, uh, in different trends impacting the community. This was a chance out, unlike a council meeting, which can be sort of a drill. What's next? What's next? What's next? And that, that rapidity of those items can be exhausting. This gave you a good chance to listen to each other, have a good conversation. There's benefit of that. Think about all the items you talked about tonight. You're trying to figure these out and there's not just one way to address these. There's lots of different ways. And you're trying to arrive at, what is that recipe? What's your appetite? A lot of organizations have a big appetite till they see what's on the menu. And then what it obligates them to do, much like you talked about earlier today. So I think you'll find as you do these periodically, that it just strengthens your ability to be proactive and also strengthens your ability as creative problem solvers. So there's a lot of dividends beyond the content of what you produced, that you simply reaffirm these priorities. There's value in that because now you all own these. And Raina knows that and she has a better perspective of where you're coming from individually and collectively. And that's really important in her role. So just, just offering that. So again, thank you for the opportunity.
We appreciate your being here. And thanks to all, we're going to adjourn now until, uh, for two weeks now, till our regularly scheduled meeting at seven PM on the sixth of April. So thank you so much and stay safe.
Good night, stay healthy.
Night.
Thanks, everybody.